The way I'm gonna. In the usual way, I'm gonna ask you to. Register your presence, Tammy.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Austin is, um, Austin is here. Uh, I have no changes or additions to the. Agenda. Uh, next item is the approval of minutes from March twenty fifth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Lee. Is there a second? That's fabulous. Any additions, corrections? To the minutes? Okay. So I'm gonna ask you to vote on approving the minutes. Uh, when I call your name. Tammy?
Yes.
Farrah?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I did it di- different order.
Yeah, you did.
Jean?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bob, Pam, the question is on voting to approve the minutes of March twenty fifth.
Yes.
And Austin votes yes. Thank you very much. Uh, public comment. Is there any member of the public? Wishes to make a comment? If you would, uh, if you would like to, if you would raise your hand. Okay. Uh, we have five members of the public. Thank you all for coming. Okay, President's Report. So, uh, we will gather. Uh, to thank and celebrate our colleague Bob Pam on June fifth at four o'clock in the Goodwin Room. And I urge us all to come wearing our party attire. And look forward to seeing you all, seeing you all there. Uh. As you know, we are waiting for the bid. From the general contractor that is now due on, uh, April twenty sixth at two o'clock in the afternoon. We have received bids, uh, from subcontractors. And the bids that we have so far received. Are slightly under budget. Uh, some of the. Some of the items attracted some, you know, two or three subcontractors, some attracted. Only one. Uh. So we are, we are so to speak, waiting for the, the bids on the twenty sixth from the general contractor. Uh. And we'll see how they, we'll see how they come in. Uh, so I'm, I guess I'm giving you the report from the Jones Library Building Committee. Uh, the building committee will, of course, reconvene once the, once we have the general contractor bid. Uh, in hand and then once the general contractor is selected. To begin the work with the general contractor. Uh, that is necessary to, uh, begin the construction of work. Uh, Sharon, do you wanna just, uh, talk a little bit about what's happening with our interim location, please?
Yeah, uh, so we were, we're really happy to have one oh one University Drive as our location and that. That will be our, our public facing location, um, on the first floor is where the children's department will be. Um, and on the, on the second floor is where all of the other public spaces will be, uh, reference and, um. Uh, uh, the adult collections and some computers and, uh, ESL special collections. Um, then, uh, because that space, as much as we love one oh one, uh, it, it's not big enough to hold our entire collection, so, um. So at sixty-five University Drive, we'll be having, uh, our pageable collection. So those will be the collections that patrons can ask for and, and then librarians will go and get them. Um, and because those two spaces aren't quite enough, there will be a third space that we need for our collection. Um, specifically for the adult collection, uh, and that, that's about. About eight thousand items, give or take, and I just got word this morning that Amherst College will be housing those items. For free for two years. This is really, really spectacular. It, it saves us quite a bit of money. Um, and it's just an amazing, um, thing for them to do for us. So shout out to Martin Garner, uh, the. Uh, director over at the Frost Library at Amherst College. Um, we've been working hard on finding, uh, locations for our fine arts collection. An auctioneer came and, and, and took some items like the, our, our rugs, and these are all items that are not on our fine arts collection. Um, and some smaller, some smaller items, a, a doll collection. So things that don't have anything to do with, um, they don't, they don't fit into our mission, our, our collection development. Uh, uh, policy. Um, our gorilla, uh, mural, which is one piece, one solid piece that has been hanging in the library for thirty years. Um, our curator is working with experts from, uh, uh. The Mead Art Museum and, and from the Williamstown, um, Clark Art. As to how to take it off of the frame and roll it so that we can store it for a couple of years. Um. Programming, uh, we're gonna be doing our ESL, uh, programs from St. Bridges. Um, not the actual church, but there's a, a, a separate, I'll call it a, a meeting community house. Um, that has classrooms, and so we'll be doing conversation circles there, one oh one tutoring, as well as our, our senior. Uh, senior ESL classes. Um, technology, so technology is gonna be a bit complicated, so once we do close. Uh, it's gonna take a couple of weeks at a minimum in order to build out. Uh, the, the infrastructure at one oh one. Um. We're gonna be reusing, uh, most of the equipment that we have at the Jones, so, so it'll be an interesting. Dance of, of, of shutting down the Jones and then really the library being offline for quite a bit. The, the library, meaning the Jones, not the branches, uh, in order to set up at one oh one and then restart at one oh one. Um, there will be security cameras and the patron counters. Those will all come back into play and, um. And again, so regarding timeline, uh, let me fast forward to the timeline. These are all issues. Uh, nothing is set in stone yet. We won't know until the, the GC bids come back, but we're looking at closing the Jones. In May, and that could be early May, it could be the middle of May, it could be the end of May. We're not, we're not sure yet. Um, and as far as moving, so. Once we close the Jones, we're gonna have to, um, pack it all up. Staff are gonna pack it. Um, and, and deal with the, all the IT stuff, and, and that's when we will start by increasing the open hours at the two branches. And then in early June, early mid, late June, sometime in June, that's when we'll actually move all of the stuff, uh, from the Jones. Over to one oh one, and again, we will maintain increased open hour schedules at the branches. And then in early July, mid-July, we'll reopen at one oh one, and that's when the hours will go back to normal at the two branches. Um, I think those are, those are the highlights. Uh, staff are working really hard. There's. So many details involved, and I just, a huge shout out to the staff. They are, they, they're contemplating every if and or what, um, and. PR is, is certainly a piece of that puzzle. They're, they're working on. How they're gonna get the information out into the community, not only digitally, but also, you know, on paper, so, um. Happy to answer questions if I, if I can.
Could you talk a little bit more about the staff? I mean, are they? How are they folding in the work of packing things up with their regular? Responsibilities? Sharon?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to, uh, everybody's working really, really hard and, um. Because the timeline has not been set in stone. The amount of programming that they've been doing has, has been whittling down, and so the less programming that they're doing, the more time they have. Uh, to be thinking about how they're going to box up and move and, and label and which staff members will be doing what, um. You know, libra- librarians are, we're very, uh, we're very perpendicular, you know, we, we do step one and then you do step two and you do step three, and so. This is kind of made for them and, and I've said to them before. They reworked library services entirely. In the matter of a couple of weeks when the pandemic hit.
Yep.
Th- this is what they're doing. They're doing it again, um. No fear of getting sick or, or, you know, so I know they can do it. I know they can do it, um, so, yeah.
Thank you, Sharon. Farrah?
Sh- um, Sharon, two questions. One is, um. So during the interim period, will staff be spread out? Even among the, even among, I mean, between the buildings and the other branches? Or is there enough space for everyone to still be in the interim locations?
Yeah, there's enough space, um, so we will have added staff at the two branches only during the time where the Jones is closed. Once we reopen at one oh one, we'll go back to normal hours at all three buildings.
Okay.
And, and there's room for staff everywhere and, um, yes, all staff will maintain their regular hours.
Okay. And the second question is, sorry, Bob, I just, it was a two-part question, not related, but, um. So is there any way the community can help?
Just with their patience and, and. And they have been awesome. Really, the public has been spectacular. They really care about the staff, um, and so at this point, that's all. That's all we can ask for is patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yes, um. It sounds like the, the one oh one of University Drive is an excellent location. Um, my question is, as always, um, how do the costs for that over eighteen months plus the second and the third location? Uh, relate to the budget that we had in the, the project? Uh, the second question, and it's similar, is that in the. Minutes that we just approved, there were a couple of questions that required, uh, follow-up answers, and I was wondering whether there are answers on. Uh, who pays for the insurance and, uh, whether there is any. Uh, change in the project design because with the ceilings being brought down, that allows for insulation to be put in. Into areas which previously had not had, uh, the. Uh, possibility of, of insulation without. Having impacts on the original designs.
Uh, so as for, all the moving costs will be a, a part of the building project, so the library doesn't have to worry about that.
Are they the same cost? Are they within the five hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the insurance will continue to be paid by the library, uh, just as it always has. Um, and as far as the installation goes, I, I did ask and, uh. The answer was, no, we still can't do that because of costs. It would cost more.
Okay, the insurance question was not about our normal insurance, but rather the cost for the, uh. Insurance relating to the, uh, possible risks to the stronghouse.
That's a part of the building project.
No, Bob, the belief was and remains. Uh, that it would be covered by the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions relating to the building project or the, uh, interim location? I will say for myself that in terms of. An interim location, it's almost unimaginable that we could have found a better one. Uh, it's, it's a great space. It's convenient. There's parking. It's on a bus line. Uh. It's in a well-traffic area of town. And, uh, I just think it's. It's about as good as it could be. Uh, it will require. Uh, a somewhat higher level of coordination from the library director in terms of the activities. Uh, that are gonna be at the interim location and the activities that are gonna be carried, continued to be carried out at the branches. And, um, again, I think also the idea that we can store some part of our collection. Uh, with Amherst College is just, um. Is just really, is really terrific, so I. I think all of that is just, um, all of that is just great news. Once we have the. The bid from the general contractor, uh. Accepted bid, low bid. Uh, things will accelerate in terms of their tempo. Uh, in terms of. Establishing more concrete. Deadlines for. Uh, packing up and, uh, moving out, so stay tuned for, stay tuned for that. Okay. Um, next, Farrah, anything from buildings and facilities?
Um, no, we have not met as yet this year, I think, because everybody's been busy with the. Move and things like that. The only thing is, um, I guess next week is the month, um, North Amherst opening. So as many of us who can make it will be there, and that's gonna be exciting. Has the bench been found yet, Sharon?
No, it's gone.
That's terrible. No, nothing else, Austin?
Yeah, that, the grand reopening of North Amherst is, is truly, uh. Uh, really a tremendous moment in the life of the library system at Amherst, and the. The building is beautiful. And it really will be a moment to celebrate. Uh, the great work that, uh, uh, the branch li- libraries do, um, and to. Express our gratitude to the anonymous donor whose generosity made all of this, um. Possible, so looking forward to that. Okay, next is a report from the Development Committee.
There I am. Uh, you have a lot of information in your packet, but I'll just run through it quickly. The annual fund, uh, continuing on the same trend it's been on for this year. Which is, we're slightly ahead of where we were at the same time last year, ninety-five thousand versus ninety thousand. Uh, slightly smaller number of gifts, but on average, the gifts are slightly larger. Uh, for the capital campaign, uh, the monthly report was forty-four thousand. Which brings us to a little over eighty-six thousand since January one. There's a lot of activity going on in relationship to publicizing our activities and. Uh, soliciting support. Uh, again, some of this is in the packet, uh, you know, the. I'm really looking forward. I'm very excited to see the viewpoint video. That's gonna be, uh, airing widely commercially. Um. Between May sixth and May twenty-first. And on PBS, the week of, uh, May twentieth, and then, uh, the Capital Campaign Committee. Retains access to all the footage that was taken in relationship to this essentially spot. Uh, and the campaign will use it in various ways, which is again, uh. Quite wonderful in terms of publicity and soliciting support and, um. The economy with which this material was acquired. That, uh, we paid very, you know, ve- very little for having access to so much, um. Commercial footage that we never could have otherwise gotten. Um. Some of us on the Capital Campaign have been leading tours through the library with great frequency, uh, two nights a week and. Two days each weekend, and we've taken, I would say, around a hundred people through, and, uh. Um, this week, I'll be going through the list. Uh, you know, we have information from every, pretty much everybody who went through, um. So I'll be going through the list of the people who came through on my tours. And getting in touch with them to follow up about the Capital Campaign. I mean, I know that we, sitting on this Zoom screen. Are way deep in the weeds of the Capital Campaign. But there are, it's hard to believe, just as I know nothing about Taylor Swift. It's hard to believe that there are people who don't know anything about the Jones Library Capital Campaign, but it's a fact. And to them, we're not even in the public phase yet. I mean, they're just amazed that. And, and on my tours, I have not been pitching the Capital Campaign. I've been very careful to say, I'm taking you on a tour to let the building speak to you. About its need to be renovated and expanded. And I, I, I believe that that message has gotten through, but I will, as I say, follow up with the nearly hundred people who have gone through so far. In addition, we've taken some special people on special tours. These are people who we know. Have the capacity to give, um, significant gifts. Obviously, I'm not gonna tell you who they are. Um, and they have made oral commitments. But we don't record those until we actually get them in writing, so I'm looking forward to at least three substantial commitments confirmed. In, in the very near future, and in addition, we've started to identify. Many of us i- in the Capital Campaign are people of a certain age. We are trying to identify people who are younger than we are. Uh, including people who, you know, live in town. Whether or not they grew up in Amherst, but also because there's a network of. Uh, people who grew up in Amherst, went to the Amherst schools, know the Jones Library. Don't know necessarily live in Amherst, but they're connected by a Facebook and other social media. And we're identifying kind of key people, and they stay in touch with each other. They have actual physical reunions, but they're in touch. Via all kinds of social networks. They know about Taylor Swift. So we're identifying people from the classes from the mid-eighties to the mid-aughts. Who can, who will be point people, who will help us identify. The big s- people who are, ha- have attachments to Amherst and who also have capacity. Uh, and so that we're in the early stages of doing that. I think that's pretty much. What I have to say, although Tammy looks as though she has a thought.
Um. There was really substantial coverage on, um, WAMC from the local.
Um. Indeed.
Affiliate, yeah, did a, a, a lengthy piece on the radio. You were featured. So it was, uh. And that, that goes all over Western Mass.
Yeah, no, that was, it, that was, that was great. We're very grateful to WAMC and to James Palegalopolis. Whose name I hope I have not butchered too much.
Sounds clo- sounds close to me.
So, uh, I see Bob. Bob?
Um. Two questions. Uh, first one is. Um, there have been discussions of having a, essentially a grand opening of the Capital Campaign. Which originally was scheduled for March sometime, but, uh, it is now. Getting towards the end of April, and I was wondering if, as and when that would happen. And the second question has been a question I've asked. Couple of years, which is that, uh, in addition to going to people who have graduated from our high school. Um, we actually are the hosts to a couple of colleges. And there are alumni magazines, which I have always thought might have an interest in these stories about their hometown. Um, and, uh, I simply have never heard of any. Attempt to get that into any alumni magazines, and alumni. Have been known to be generous to their, uh. Alma matas, and sometimes some of them think of Amherst as being part of that.
Is that addressed to me?
Well, it's a general suggestion which I've been making.
No, no, either, I just didn't want to interrupt anybody else. Um, I actually have a connection, you know. Because of my past life back to UMass Amherst, and, uh, I, so I will ask about, uh, UMass Magazine. I have, that's all that I can say. I mean, I don't know what their policies are. I don't know what their interests are, but I would certainly ask, and, um. I think the Capital Campaign is waiting until, until. Shovels in the ground, and then we'll have a, we will have a giant festival celebrating with hard hats. Uh, the public launch of the Capital Campaign.
Thank you, Lee.
We'd hope to do something in the building, but I think the timing is just gonna be too tight.
Other, other questions about the Capital Campaign? Farrah, did you wanna ask some of them?
Who is not related to the campaign?
Well.
Lee, did you know that Taylor Swift has a new album out?
I think even I, living under a rock, have heard something about that, about the, i- is this the one about the poets?
Lee is volunteering to lead the. Taylor Swift Subcommittee. And we'll get monthly reports about the later develop, latest developments in Swifting Land.
We should be so lucky.
Lee, um. One thing that might be just useful for all of us is to be reminded of, of what I'm gonna say, some process questions, so. Could you talk a little bit, just in a general way, about the process of. Breaching, cultivating, closing with donors? I mean, it is a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah. It, yeah, it. It would be nice if you could just write a letter or pick up the phone or knock on a door and say, I'm here for the Jones Library Capital Campaign. And I would like you to give me a signed check for a million dollars.
Yep.
Yeah, it does not work that way.
Yep.
Uh. Sometimes, you know, there, have donors who have a pre-existing relationship with your entity, but often, i- i- I mean, it, it. Fundraising is all about. Uh, on the individual level, it's all about relationships, personal relationships, institutional relationships, and it takes a while to cultivate. Uh, we've been cultivating. In, in a quiet way, since it appeared that this campaign or this project, um, was starting. And we've been ramping up the cultivation and the sophistication with which we can identify. People who might be interested in the library, people who have capacity to give. Um, people who have a track record of philanthropic activity, and we. Contact them in a variety of ways. We have house parties, we, um. Have, take tours, we. Eat many, 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 many lunches. And have many, many, many cups of coffee, uh, and. A- and that's how we've gotten where we've gotten. We have raised over nine million dollars. Uh, in, again, I, I'm not gonna be whining and I'm not gonna be self-pitying, but in circumstances that have been quite a challenge. Because, uh. Ideally, you build up momentum. And you have, you know, you pick up momentum and you have the wind at your back and things. This campaign has been chilled with. Stopping and starting. Uh, and, um. Just hard to, hard to build and sustain momentum, which is, you know, once we have shovels in the ground. Everybody knows that the project is definitely going forward, and there are people we have spoken to who say, don't talk to me until. You can absolutely guarantee me that this is happening. So that's, that's it. Did, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it's useful for all of us.
Yeah.
And, and the. Public beyond us to be reminded that. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of work that is absolutely invisible to us. And is not reflected in a monthly number. That goes on from day to day and week to week to put us in position. Where, uh, substantial gifts can be made. And I, I just think it's useful, certainly useful for me to be reminded of all of that. Um. More or less in labor that's invisible to us. Uh, that is necessary in order for the campaign. Uh, to succeed. The other thing, of course, that. Uh, you all have done, which is reflected in the. Monthly report, but again, I assume there's much more going on, is to identify. Uh. Foundation support, corporate support, governmental grants. foundation support, corporate support, governmental grants. And again, tremendous amount of work goes into trying to figure out what those are and then to work to figure out how best to approach a foundation or how best to position oneself to get a grant. So I think it's, again, I'm grateful for the.
Well, yeah, thank you for reminding me. I meant to say something about, about the grants. We have several in process. Again, I don't want to talk about them until, until we get them. And, and right, I don't, I don't like to dwell on the difficulties, which is why I don't, you haven't heard much about them. I'd just like to put my head down and get the job done.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you, Lee. Bob?
At the last Budget Committee meeting, I had said that I thought I should meet with the Capitol Campaign leadership and those who are running the actual dollars of it. And, and I thought that that would be an appropriate way for me to at least get a better handle on things. At that Budget Committee meeting, it was suggested that I could not do that with, in my current role without first getting an approval from the board. My reading of the M O U with the Friends of the Jones basically said that, that I should be able to, to get whatever I needed in terms of looking at things. But I thought that it was appropriate, since the question was raised at the Budget Committee, that we actually have a discussion about whether I or anyone else who would be in the Budget Committee can and should take a look inside of the way in which the campaign is being managed and how many dollars are there and so on. So I am bringing that up here and now so that we can at least have that discussion. And either I can know that it is within or not within my scope of duties.
Bob, can you explain a little bit? I'm, I'm not clear what it is that you're, what is it you're suggesting? I mean, let me, I'm sorry, how the campaign is being managed? Just if you could explain a little bit what you have in mind.
I had suggested that I meet with Kent and Ginny and Nat and just see exactly what is happening and, you know, how it is put it into bank accounts and how that all functions at a more concrete level. It seemed to me that that was simply an appropriate thing to do. And the Budget Committee discussion basically said, you should really go to the board before you go and do such a thing. So here I am.
Farah?
Yeah, but aren't why would we want to micromanage another committee? Like, don't, don't we, no. Don't we trust that they know what they're doing and that this is what they're doing and this is within their scope of work? And I, I just, I don't understand what you're saying.
You want me to answer?
No, yeah, I just, I don't understand the reasoning behind that.
Why do we bother having a director? Because each of the people in the library knows what they should be doing. It's because sometimes one does actually look.
So I, I think it's, Farah, let me, I'm sorry. I think it's a really good question that you've raised. The board now gets a monthly accounting from the Capitol Campaign of progress, which gives me confidence about what's going on. If there are other questions that need to be answered, I think they can be asked and answered. So if there's a, like, where is the money being kept? I think it could be asked and answered. How much and when is being turned over to the town? I think it can be asked and answered. So I'm not sure why any one of us, given that we, we, we get a monthly report, if there are questions, they can be asked and answered. So I, I don't understand why there would be a need for a, a kind of separate meeting. We have the co-chair of the Capitol Campaign and of our Development Committee, who can, I think, answer questions. And if the questions can't be answered because she doesn't have the information, she can get, she can get the information. So for my, for myself, I, I'm not, still not exactly sure what particular things. But I'm not, not saying we shouldn't get it, but I'm not exactly sure what it is that you would be asking and why it can't be asked in a trustees meeting so that we're all, we're all informed about it.
Is that a question to me?
It's, it's, it's an observation. If you have a comment on it, I'm happy to entertain the comment. Sure.
The actual pace of receipts has been substantially lower than what I had been led to believe would occur. So I am very interested in knowing whether the actual receipt rate is going to likely change based upon what they are actually doing, you know, behind the wall, if you will. In addition, there are a series of individual policy decisions that are made which deal with the dollar amount which is ready to be released, which I need to understand better because I am not certain that they reflect the best interests of the library or the town. And I would like to get a better understanding of each of those. If you would like me to do each of those things at a Budget Committee meeting and ask all of those questions in the context of a Budget Committee meeting, I would be willing to do that. I thought it would be wiser to do that first in the setting of administering the M O U, which is exactly what I thought it required me to do.
So I have a suggestion, maybe it would be good to do this. At our next trustees meeting, let's review the M O U. Since I think at least one of us wasn't on the trustee, maybe more than one of us at the time that that M O U was created. Let's, let's review the M O U between the library and the Capitol Campaign. And then it seems to me we can come back to this question of what kind of information is needed in order to effectuate the memorandum of understanding. As I understand it, what the, what the, we have committed to, what the Capitol Campaign is committed to, is to turn over dollars as they come in. That may be wrong, but that's my understanding. So I'm still not exactly sure what other questions we need to be asking, but I think you're right. We should look at the memorandum of understanding. Probably do it on a periodic basis, certainly do it, you know, we can do it on our next trustees meeting and be clear about what the relationship is and should be between the trustees and the, and the Capitol Campaign. How about that? How about we do that?
That's fine. I'm not sure by that point I will still be on the board, but that's fine.
Well, it's, again, Bob, you're raising an issue that is not just about you, right?
I understand that.
We're grateful to you for the work that you do, but this is a, I take it the question you were raising is a question about our responsibility, the board and trustees responsibility in relationship to that memorandum of understanding. So I think we should just take a look at it. Everybody bring themselves up to speed. If there are things that we need to be doing that we're not doing, that would be the moment to say, gee, we should be doing this and that. Okay, other questions about the Capitol Campaign or development? Well, thank you, Lee, and thanks, thank your colleagues for us, for the enormous amount of work that they are, that they are, that they are doing.
We're, we're happy to be doing it.
Good, well, we're grateful. Okay, so Tammy, P P P?
Okay, P P P has not met since the last board meeting. However, I have conferred with Sharon about the evaluation process, which of course will be complicated by the packing and the moving. So at our May meeting, we will be reviewing the evaluation forms and bringing them to the June board meeting. And I can distribute them obviously to people online, the board and people in town. But my concern is the staff and they're going to be very busy. So I'm talking with Sharon about logistics. We're going to wait until the staff have unpacked and opened and then do the staff portion and the public portion of the evaluation process. So I just wanted to update you on that. I'm going to turn it to Farah. Do you have a report on, on the Jedi meeting?
Yeah, thanks, Tammy. Well, we basically discussed the collection development benchmarks, that the presentation that Betsy had, the, had she said a few meetings ago. And we were talking about, there were some questions about how we can get this out to the public, to let the public know where we are with our collection. And there was some conversation about maybe Betsy writing up something or putting her presentation on the library website or in a newsletter. Am I right, Sharon? Isn't that what we discussed? I mean, you weren't there, but we, you, Mia, you and I chatted about it. So I think the thing is, we're, we're Ginny, who's also on the Jedi Committee, was going to work with Betsy and see if we can get something out either on the website or in the newsletter. The other thing Mia had brought up, she was kind of picking up brains about programming in the interim period. And we threw out some ideas about, can we check in with Town Hall and use the, the room they have down there for some of the children's programming? Or I think there was some talk about the Mead Museum. But I think since then, Sharon, as you said today, that we sort of have a few spaces where the programming will continue. So it was just a lot of discussion about these two things. Nothing, and we're meeting again on Friday. So if anyone wants to attend, it's at 12:30.
Thank you, Farah. So that's our report.
Okay, Bob?
At the last meeting, I had asked whether there was any plans for P P P to look at the question of whether we have any policies with respect to whistleblowers, retention and destruction of records and conflict of interests. Is that on the agenda?
I met with Sharon and about that, and she's going to check with the town first to see what kind of policies the town has in place for those features. So, so I haven't, I had discussed it with her when we met about the evaluation. And she said she would first check with the town, so it is on our radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions about the P P P or the Jedi Committee? Farah, could you just remind us of the membership of the Jedi Committee?
There's Mia from the children's room. Melissa Giraud, who's a co-founder of Embrace Race. Ginny Hamilton with her non-Capital Campaign hat. Walter, I'm blanking on his last name.
Lloyd.
Lloyd, yes, he's, he used, he just graduated from the high school. He's at UMass. Yours truly and, and that's it, right?
Right, Raphael Rogers.
Oh, Raphael, yes, Rogers, who is at Clark University and an amazing resource for us. He and Melissa Giraud, actually, with all the work they do, the D E I work they do and their experience with work related to racial issues. They've been amazing. But we're still like, one of the things I forgot to mention is we're still waiting for the surveys to come back. They're sort of trickling in. I think it's sort of slowed down. So I think we're gonna, there's gonna be a push to send them out again once in the interim location. And then I guess we start discussing a little more over the next few months or in the fall.
Great, great. Well, again, set, express the gratitude to the board. Again, we, we're, we're really grateful for the work that you all are doing.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the Budget Committee.
Now, the Budget Committee was canceled this past week, so it did not meet. There are minutes for the last four or five Budget Committee meetings included in the packet. The, the one item which is on the agenda here is a proposal for an organizational credit card for the Jones Library. I have had some discussions about this with John Shannon, who is our business manager. But I had not seen the proposal until it was put onto this packet. It basically reflects my discussions with him, although the Budget Committee has not looked at it yet. It calls for basically two credit cards to be credited to the library. One for small items which are currently used by staff for small items, like if we are buying five dollar gift certificates for a kids program. Right now, the way that works is that a staff member essentially puts out the money and then gets reimbursed. And that's really not a very good way to do things. And then there's a second card which would require approval by the appropriate level of authority, the Budget Committee Chair or, or the Treasurer or the Vice Treasurer or the for contract work, which is of a high value. But we're, the vendor is basically recommending strongly that it, excuse me, second. Where the vendor is recommending that, that it be done through a credit card rather than a check. And I'm not sure why and how we would need to do that for a vendor, but it's conceivable that there are cases of that kind. So, you know, there are no rules at this point written for this. And obviously, we would not want to approve it without rules. But I'm just bringing this to you so that at least you have an understanding of this item, which is being discussed within the Budget Committee.
Right. John, did you want to say anything about this idea? Credit card?
Sure, I'll try to kind of give you a brief summary of just the, Bob mentioned some of the reasons we would like to do it. And I'll give you, I'll try to give you that and just a little background about it. So we, we kind, there are a few categories of expenses that we, right now, we, we rely on, on our, on our staff. Like Bob said, sometimes those are small purchases, sometimes they're not small purchases. And, and what we run into is that increasingly vendors don't, don't take paper checks. They have no way to process them anymore. Don't take paper checks. They have no way to process them anymore because their, their, their business is essentially online. Um, and so we want to be able to pay them and not ask our staff to advance thousand dollar purchases in that way to get reimbursed by us. Um, so that's, that's one category. The other, another possible category is that. When we have to pay, let's say, uh, uh, one of our, blanking on the name, but our, our streaming video provider that we have. Uh, you know, are those, those, those payments tend to run like. Four to eight thousand dollars and we're putting paper checks in the mail for that amount of money. And during COVID, we had a, it happened a few times that we, we, checks were lost. Um, they weren't cashed by, you know, I think nothing bad happened in the sense that no one else got a hold of them. But they never arrived. And so we want to avoid interruption of service and we want to reduce the risk of payment paying that way. And also recognizing that more and more, uh, vendors don't really want to get, they don't want to get checks in the mail. Some, some vendors are fine, some are not. So the, the issue we've had getting a credit card, and it's true for most nonprofits, is that. Uh, most credit card companies want, they don't want to face a library. They want to face. A board member often, um, and you know, in the case of a, of a nonprofit and that we don't want to ask. Not, uh, board members to do that because again, we're asking an individual to. Assume that risk, um, for the, for the library in this case. And so we, um, there's an organization that specializes in credit cards for nonprofits. That we would be, that we, the library would be the customer. They would approve us. Um, we would have the ability to have one or more cards, as Bob said. The, the, the credit card issuer, it's, it's basically, it's Commerce Bank. Um, and Mastercard are partnering with this, with this organization. Um, we can. They'll give us a, you know, look, obviously they'll, they'll give us a credit limit when we apply. We can then have. Uh, per card limits. So if we have a card that we want staff to use where we know they shouldn't have to spend over a certain amount. We can make that, we can set that limit ourselves. Um, and we can set a different one for, I would say, kind of the vice treasurer, deputy treasurer, treasurer role as well. Um, and, uh, the reconciliation process would look probably very much like it does for invoices. We'd have the same controls over it. Um, we would pay it out of our, out of our corporate checking account at the end of every month, just like we would with any other kind of card. Um, but the advantage would be that we would be able to, um, you know, that, that, that this, this company charity charge. Would be facing the library and not an individual. So that's, that's kind of the. That's kind of a, of, kind of a, a brief overview of what it would look like.
Uh, Sharon, do you know, uh, the practices at, um. Uh, other libraries?
Yeah, uh, yeah. So in all the other libraries that I've worked at, staff have had to, um. Uh, 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 use their own credit card and then get reimbursed and. But, you know, times have changed. I'm old and now here is this opportunity to get, uh, an organizational credit card. Uh, that doesn't cost money and that doesn't require any of our social security numbers. That's why I have always said, no, I'm not giving up my social security number. For, for this kind of a thing. Um, so the fact that this exists now is. So great and would satisfy so many problems. And as John said, it, it will still go through all the same proper channels. Um, so no one person could ever, uh, use the card and, and you know, head on off to Aruba or anything like that.
Yeah. And the other thing I was going to just mention very quickly is that QuickBooks, which is our, you know, which is our, our accounting bookkeeping software. Uh, is falls into this category and the, the additional problem is that once you pay for it, whoever pays for it. Has to leave their own credit card on file with QuickBooks, um, for, for automated renewal. So you can't just pay for it and say, oh, I'll give you. Another card next year. And so, I mean, I get that's, you know, these are the kinds of things that I, I, I would like to, um. Not have to, uh, I would like us not have to, to not have to deal with. So.
And charity charge does not. Charge.
Correct. They, yeah, their deal is with, is with deal, you know, they make their money through, um, an arrangement with Commerce Bank and, uh, Mastercard. So, and so we don't, there's no, um, we don't have an annual fee. The cost is not directed at us. It's directed at the. Um, you know, the vendor for accepting the card and, and, uh. And, uh, yeah, that's where it comes from. And they have, I don't know the total number of. I can find out. I have some background information. I don't know the number of. Uh, customers they have, but their customers as far as kind of annual budget range anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred million. So they have a. They cover a pretty broad range and they're the only, they are the only, uh, company I can find that does this. Now. The major card issuers will tell you that they offer cards to nonprofits. What they really do is offer a business card that basically puts you back where you started, which is. They want to face somebody and not the library.
And does charity charge? Charge interest or late fees for?
They may, they may, I think that they, I'd have to look into that, but I know that they, they want to see the, and this, uh. All right. So they issue the monthly statement twenty days before it's due. So we have enough time to do the approval for that, for that monthly statement. But to answer, I would have to look into that to answer your question, but they do have the expectation that it will be paid on a monthly basis.
Yeah, it'd be good as we talk about this to. If, if for some reason we were late, is there a late fee? Is there an interest charge?
Yes.
Uh, to, to find out exactly.
Yeah, like I will find that out.
What the arrangement is. Sharon, uh, for in other town departments or like the schools. Do they have organizational credit cards?
I understand that the town does, um, but I don't know how it works.
Yeah. So as we continue to talk about this. It would be good to just find out. At the town level, schools, I mean, what, what, what the prac, what the practices are, because as Bob said, we're gonna want to. Be clear about what the policies are. It would be good to have some, something.
Yeah. And, and the other piece of this is that we want to do it in such a way that, that, um, well, that we're comfortable, obviously with how we're using it, but also that the auditors feel that whatever controls we have. Are, you know, reflect what they would expect to see for, for using a card like this. Yeah.
So other questions about this organizational credit card? Are there things that you want to ask? John or Sharon to look into or any information that you want as we begin to think about doing this? Okay, well, we will look forward to more conversations about. Um, this, thank you for raising it, uh, and we'll look forward to getting more information about it.
Right, thank you.
Bob, anything else about the budget from the budget committee?
I believe we have submitted the budget. For next year to the town. It has been amended to add twenty-five thousand dollars to the, the two areas which I had recommended. Um. It is. Based upon, I guess, Sharon's best understanding of what the costs are likely to be in our new facility.
Yep. Okay. I thank you. Any other question about the budget? Okay, next investment, Bob?
Hey, the. We met comparatively recently, uh, but that covered only the period through. Um, December and, and January. We have not yet met on the March quarter. Um. I have not set that up yet because I. Thought it might be appropriate if there were, uh, other people who might be interested in, uh, being participants in this. Uh, as of March thirty-first. Uh, the endowment was valued at nine million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the Woodbury Fund was valued at seven hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Um. Those are obviously higher numbers than we have seen in a while. Um, they're not. Quite at the highest it's ever been and the last week has not been kind. Basically to investors, so, um, I don't know exactly where we will be by the time we get to the next quarter. Um, but, uh, these were at least encouraging numbers. Um, we are now dealing with Dan Voss as the representative of, of our exterior advisors. Um, but he is now representing Mercer rather than Vanguard. The reporting still comes out of Vanguard. When I look for the reports, I go to the Vanguard site. Um. So I don't know exactly how. Mercer's, uh, oversight, uh, is going to work for all of this. And, um, I hope at our next meeting, uh, we will get a clearer understanding of all of that. Um. I assume that they will not be micromanaging him.
Right. Any questions about investment? Okay. Thank you, Bob. Uh, Rich Morse from the Friends of the Jones Library.
Morning.
Good morning.
There is a consensus that has developed on the board. That the board wants more of face-to-face contact with individual trustees. Now we have more than enough contact with Lee, so that's fine. Um, but I have to produce on the other members of the board. So, um. I'm noticing, and I don't want to make this too regimented, but. Uh, I'm looking, we have seven to eight, uh, meetings left this year. And it would be great if the, the other five members of the board individually volunteered for one additional meeting this year. To just hang out with the board. Um, we have, uh, we have a meeting on May thirteenth, which is just the board. Uh, and then we have our annual public meeting, which is June tenth. So, um. I'm looking for volunteers or at least to think for the, um, the other five members of the board to think about when they would like to attend and, um. Um. Just be present at, uh, at a, at a friends meeting and you get to meet the whole crew and just see who is, you know. On the, on the friends executive board. And I see Ferris hand up.
Uh, when is the, what time is the May thirteenth meeting?
It's, um, five o'clock, five PM. And it go, it runs about an hour and a half.
And Rich, could you say, Tammy, just one sec, could you, Rich, could you say exactly what it is that you want? So a board, you want a board member, which is, sounds like a great idea to come to a meeting. Uh.
I think, I think it's just a general sentiment on the board. That, um, that the friends have gotten sort of out, sort of out separated from the trustees. Um, I'm not, I'm not looking for a lot of contact. I'm just looking for some, so. Um, and just, just so the trustees know who the friends are and, and, um. And what we're doing and how we, um, how we discuss and that, that kind of thing.
So you're basically looking for a board member to come and kind of sit in the audience and watch.
Yeah.
I can do the thirteenth.
Uh, okay. Just, 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 I'm sorry. So in the past, pre-COVID. We had a tradition of meeting once a year. The, the board of the library and the board of the friends. And are you suggesting this as, um, an alternative to that or? You like this better than doing that? Uh, have you, have you thought about that?
I think there was, um, some concern about having too many board members at a friends meeting. Um. Regarding open meeting law, that sort of, sort of thing. By the way, I did not really know about this tradition, um, and if we. If you want to reinstate that tradition, that, that might suffice, but, um, but that, that hasn't come up. What has been suggested is. Having, um, Lee have a, a, a guest with her, um, from the board.
Sharon?
Yeah, so, uh, I did, um. I, I did mention the, the joint meetings and it's not that they were against that, but they were way more interested. In really you guys go into their meetings. They, they want to know more about you personally. They want to get to know you more that way. So they thought. Having these, you know, like intimate one-on-one as opposed to these, you know, really public and structured meetings.
Okay, uh, Tammy?
Yeah, I had planned to come to the, uh, annual meeting at Munson's.
Well, that would be great.
I'll come to that. I used to be the representative before Lee, but now all the. Some of the board members have changed. I do know some of them, but I don't know all of them. So I'll come to the annual meeting.
Well, that check, so that checks two members off my list right now and then I can chase Austin, you know, through the fall or whatever.
I think maybe, Rich, the thing to do is to send the calendar of, of meetings to. Sh- Sharon?
Sure.
And Sharon can, um, you know, Gene isn't here right now. We'll have a new member, uh, you know, when Bob, uh, when Bob leaves. So. If you'd send it to Sharon, Sharon can send it to, to all of us and people can opt in and say, I can do this in November. I can do this and so.
All right. Well, thank you, Farah and Tammy. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, other than that, um, I don't know, Lee, Lee was at the meeting, that, that last meeting. Is there anything more? That I need to report? I, I don't, I think I got it all. I think I've got what's most important.
Yeah, um, Sharon was there and the friends gave some money for programming.
Yeah.
And otherwise it was just a, an ordinary meeting, the usual. Reports to the friends. If I missed anything, Sharon will pick it up.
Rich, anything else?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank, thanks to the friends and we will look forward to. Uh.
I, I, what I, what I do is I report back about these meetings. With my particular. Perspective. To the friends.
We, we forgive you. I mean, we're grateful. Um, all right, Sharon?
Yeah, so the first thing, the, uh, one of the things that the friends approved was, uh, forty-one hundred dollars to be withdrawn from Woodbury. Uh, for museum passes for FY twenty-five. And so, uh, I'm asking that you all approve that as well.
So you want us, uh, to, to vote to approve this?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion from a board member?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, voting to approve, uh, Farah?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And Austin vote yes.
And the only other thing that I wanted to talk about was the library on Saturday. We hosted, uh, Tony Dieter, Lizzie, Holly Black and, uh, the first. Uh. Session of Spiderwick Chronicles, the new series that's out on Roku. Um. It was awesome. It was, so it was our last big event that is, that will ever happen in the, the, the Woodbury Room as it stands now. The place was packed. There was over a hundred people. Uh, some folks came from, there was Rhode Island. There was Washington DC represented. Um, a ton of college students, uh, people and, and little students, um, just people who love fantasy. Uh. It was so great. So huge shout out to the children's department. They put a lot of work into this. There were some IT issues, but it all got solved. Um, they brought, they're famous now, you know, to, and, and, um, and it was just a really great event. And so. I just wanted to tell you that. Yay.
Right.
That's it.
So, uh, I have a question, Sharon, on a somewhat different subject. You may, you may be able to answer this. If you can't answer it now, you might. Like. At a future meeting. Several states in the United States are considering legislation. To protect libraries and protect librarians. Connecticut, New Jersey, California are among those states. I don't know what the status of. Whether there's any such legislation already existing in the state of Massachusetts. Or whether there is, if, if there isn't, whether there's any sense that there should be. Uh, and I wonder if you, do you know of whether there is any such legislation in the state of Massachusetts?
I know they've been working on, not necessarily to protect librarians. Massachusetts is thankfully way different from Florida and Texas. Um. You know, we're not losing our jobs because we're putting gender queer on our shelves. Uh, but unfortunately my colleagues in other states, that's exactly what's happening. Um, there are. Initiatives right now in Boston regarding access, um. Access to. Access to online audio, for example, right now, libraries have to pay a lot of money in order to have access to these items, and it doesn't necessarily, the access doesn't last forever, there's a cutoff date, and so, so there's that piece. I will have to look further into the, the question about actually protecting librarians.
Yeah, you, again, if, if you could, you might consult with the, you know, the State Library Association and see what they are what they, what they think. Alas, unfortunately, Massachusetts is not immune to some of the problems that have emerged in Connecticut and in New Jersey, so this is not just the, you know, Florida and Texas thing, but I, I don't know about Massachusetts, I don't know what's there, I don't know what the Massachusetts Library Association is doing, whether they think adequate protection, but it would be good if at a future meeting you could let us know what you find out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, anything else for the director? Yeah, Bob?
I have for a couple of years been collecting printouts of the newsletter published by a Connecticut library where we used to live. It is in many ways a, a much easier and more attractive presentation of things that are done. Since we have not met in person in a couple of years, I've not had any real way to talk about it or show any of those things. So what I think I will do is I will bring it to the library, and if Sharon would make sure that it was available whenever board members are in the library, they can take a look at, at this folder of materials. And if the people who do the actual preparation of our newsletters online could take a look at it, it might be helpful for all of you.
Right, that sounds, that sounds great. And Bob, again, I I say this with a sense of, I ask this question with a sense of sadness. But do you yet know when you may be resigning from the board? I ask because it would be, you know, we want to have as little of, of, an interruption in terms of the full membership of the board, do you yet know what your plan is?
I, at this moment, think that I will be doing it next month. I think I've probably got one more meeting of the Investment Committee in the, and maybe one more meeting of the Budget Committee. And possibly a meeting with the Capital Campaign staff. But we will see about that, but basically, my, my thought is I will probably be resigning in May. My plans to leave have not changed drastically, although I have not yet sold my house, and so if there are people who are listening in who want to take a look at the house, you know, I have a broker.
Okay, I don't think this should be a commercial, Bob, but good.
But, you know, those are the considerations that are, are in my mind.
Okay, well, we, we're, we're, we're grateful for you keeping us informed, and again, only you stay for as long as you possibly can, but we want to think about not having a vacancy for as long as we can avoid it. Okay, anything else for the director? All right, everybody, I think we'll say, Zykos, happy Passover for those of you that celebrate. And we'll look forward to seeing you soon, stay well, everybody.
Take care, thank you.